All right, next item, please.
So, under citizen participation, we have non-agenda items for action or board follow-up.
That's what I think we were just.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
Yeah.
Do you want me to circle back to the top four?
I think minutes would be the next.
I'm sorry?
Minutes.
Did we already do staff recognition?
No.
Nope.
Staff recognition, liaisons and social responsibility technicians.
So, I'm not sure who's still here. I believe Zainab Ali, are you here? So, I think a lot of people that were supposed to be here might have left. I saw a few people. Zainab Ali, she's the Etzel Ford High School Community Partnership Liaison. Samira Daklallah, Social Responsibility Technician. Mohamed Sabra, Dearborn High Student Services Liaison. Sana Hamadi, I know that she was here and she had to leave. She's a Salina Elementary Parent Outreach Mentor. And also Imkeltum Nasser from Woodworth, the Social Responsibility Technician. If anyone's here, please, please join me. If not, I have certificates and will send them to everyone as always. This evening, the district would like to recognize and thank the staff that fills the following positions. District Liaison, Student and Family Services, Student Services. Parent Tech and Intervention Liaison, Community Partnership Liaison, Parent Community Liaison, Student Services Liaison, Parent Outreach Mentors, Social Responsibility Technicians, and Student Empowerment Positions. The variety of positions all have a common quality and a superpower in common. Each day, they are the threads that ensure yet another layer of connection, support, connection happens among all the stakeholders of Dearborn schools. They are yet another layer of the solid foundation that bridges parents with teachers and students with administrators, administrators with parents, and so on. For the purpose of providing students and families with the highest quality of ongoing communication, so that everyone may understand and be understood better. Their position requires them to apply much flexibility, patience, thoroughness, persistence, and heart to each of their interactions for the social, emotional, and academic well-being of our students. A gigantic thank you to the staff in these positions for going the extra mile for student success, parent relationships, and education, and so generously giving your attention where it's needed most on any given day. Thank you all very much, and you'll get your certificates.
Thank you very much. Next item?
Approval of minutes. Approval of minutes at the following Dearborn Board of Education meeting, Policy Committee Meeting, April 10th, 2023, Board Report 22-120. Finance Committee Meeting, April 10th, 2023, Board Report 22-121. And regular P-12 meeting, April 10th, 2023, Board Report 22-122. Recommended action, make any necessary corrections and move approval of these minutes.
So, move.
Support.
Motion by Trustee Dambrosio, supported by Trustee Petlicoff. Any corrections that need to be made to any of the minutes from the trustees? Seeing none, may I attach unanimous roll? All right, so be it. Next item?
Special reports, hold harmless millage, Mr. Thomas Wall.
Good evening, President Thorpe, Dr. Malicko, and members of the board. Just going to take a brief time today just to talk about our operational millages that are coming up for renewal. As you can see on this chart, we have two operational millages. We have the 18 mills non-homestead that is levied on property that is not your primary household, there's a few exceptions on that. And we have our hold harmless millage, which goes back to Proposal A, that when we first introduced Proposal A, Dearborn's revenue was higher than what the state maximum was. So, there was a hold harmless millage levy to make sure we didn't lose money going from the old system to the new system. And over time, those millages have changed. The 18 mills has not changed, but the whole harmless has declined over that time. This chart also shows that we have our debt millage. So, that shows you a portion that's in the light blue in that section, and the hold harmless was yellow. And we've already covered that there was a state law change in '21, where they actually changed our funding model for that single year. And for us to get our maximum foundational allowance, we were supposed to reduce our hold harmless millage. And obviously, they didn't tell us until November. And since majority of our tax base is in the summer, we still levy that millage. Instead of giving, you know, 100,000 people a tax refund that year, MD says, "Don't levy it the following year," and that's why you don't see a yellow line in the 22, 2022 school year. And then back in '23, it came back, it will come back into play. So, that's just a quick showing of the graph. So, the key points here is that Proposal A started in 1994. We renew that operational millage in Dearborn every 10 years. And so, coming up, we've done it twice already, the renewal. We had to do it originally back in 1994. We did it in 2004, 2014. And now, for 2024, our current operating millage over the 10 years for both the hold harmless and the operational 18-mill millage is going to expire on June 30th, 2024. So, I need to put that on your agenda and make sure the public's aware of that. That roughly makes up a little about $42 million of our money for operational, just in the general fund. It's not dealing with the debt fund millage that is totally separate based on voted bond issues, but for our general operating fund. The state assumes that if we don't levy this millage, that the state does not make up the difference. So, there will actually be an actual hard loss to our budget of roughly about $42, $43 million in the '24, '25 school year. So, we still have, you know, a little over a year to get that through the process. I do add the, excuse me, debt millage listed out there also. So, just, just a reminder on the debt millage, this is, the debt millage is scheduled to go down next year. Right now, we're at 3.5 mills. It is scheduled to go down to roughly about 1.3, 1.4. We don't actually know the exact millage until the taxable values come out from Wayne County. They're supposed to be released after March 1st, but Wayne County has always been very late on that. So, we'll hopefully get it sometime mid to late month this year, this current month, and we'll have an idea what that final millage rate will be. Just so, also, so just be aware that for legal purposes, if we actually go out to vote for approval before June 30th, '24, it's considered a renewal. If we do it after June 30th, 2024, it's considered an increase, just because the actual date of the current millage expires on June 30th. Does it make any impact on what our tax base, I mean, what our taxes we collect will be? That doesn't change. It's still that $42, $43 million, but it's a change on what the language will actually say. Also, on the last line there, I have a link to election dates. Back when they did a lot of the election reform, they limited the number of dates. And if we go out for an election that doesn't already have an election on it, we have to pay that cost. And that could be anywhere from 140 to, you know, $200,000, depending on the overtime at the local city level. So, the next potential date that I'm aware of that actually has something officially on it already is the February election for the legislators for the, I'm not sure what it's actually called, but that's the next date that we have something already planned in February of '24. That's my quick update. It was just a chance to get the board, make sure everyone's on the same page, so the public know that, you know, for operational purposes, we will have to have those two millages up for renewal at some point before June 30th, 2024. Any questions?
Trustee Petlicoff?
A couple of things. One, first, I want to remind everyone that the majority of that $42 million that is generated from these hold harmless millages is coming from the non-homestead, which means businesses.
Correct.
Not from your personal home that you're residing in.
Right, $36 million of the 42 is on the 18 mills for non-homestead property, which is your businesses, your apartment complexes.
Rentals.
Home or some to the.
Right. The, the other question I do have is, do we traditionally, are those two separate ballot?
Yes, they do have to be two separate ballots, but usually, we have done them at the same time.
But we do them at the same time?
Correct.
So, that, if you vote for one and not the other, what, we could still potentially
Yeah, we would have an impact to our budget.
Right.
We'd have to address that budget.
Right. Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
One question I would have is, you mentioned the, the potential dates. So, since normally, these are things that you'd see on a November ballot, I would assume.
Correct.
Because 2023, there's nothing currently proposed for a ballot locally. If we chose to put this on at that point, we'd bore the, the cost associated with it.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, the primary, that's what I was thinking of, February 20, 2014.
All right.
All right, thank you.
Thank you much. Next item?
Next, another presentation by Mr. Scott Hummel and Ms. Katie Hetrick, Sexual Education Advisory Board Report and Recommendations.
Good evening, everyone. How are you this evening?
Good evening.
Super exciting information now at the end of the meeting, really. End this with a bang for a yell. So, I'm Scott Hummel, Supervisor of Student Services, PE and Athletics.
I'm Katie Hetrick. I do work in the district, but I ended up as Co-Chair of the Committee because I have a long parental involvement, including currently being the Etzel Ford PTSA president.
So, what we'll do is we'll kind of go through the process of the SEAB, talk about where it started, how, where it started, how we got to where we are. We'll talk about some of the data that we provided the group, how we formulated the group, and then ultimately, our recommendation. So, what is the SEAB? State law says any district that provides sex education has to have the Sex Advisory Group. That group basically goes through, makes recommendations to the board about what it is they're proposing curriculum-wise for the district, and then they also review the curriculum and the methods used within the district throughout the period of that curriculum. The last time Dearborn did this was in 2012. So, it came to us, it came to me, I think it came to Ross initially first, and then that's how we set out to redo the curriculum that we're talking about now. So, in August of '22, this past school year, we sent out a survey to parents throughout the district. We basically sent them surveys regarding what is taught in Human Growth and Development in 5th grade, 7th grade, and 9th grade. They were also asked if they were willing to serve on the committee, and there were 246 parents that said, yes, they'd be willing to meet all five meetings. Those meeting dates were in that original survey. And that was one of the requirements initially to be on it, was that they would agree to meet in all those times. Also, per state law, if you have the committee, there are certain requirements you have to have as far as composition. There has to be clergy, there has to be public health, teachers, parents, students, and administrators. So, when we went through and broke down and created the committee, we were cognizant of that. We had eight parents, we had 10 parents that had agreed to be on it and then never sort of responded, they ghosted us, if you will. We had four high school students, we had two local clergy, we had five staff members, including an administrator, myself, a school nurse, two teachers, and then two, two people, Ross and then Barb Fliss, who weren't actually voting members, but they served as sort of guidance, if you will. Barb Fliss works for Wayne County, Wayne Risa, she's the HIV sex ed consultant and the expert in the curriculum, and she works with districts throughout the county.
Hi, John. So, before making decisions about sexual education, we thought it was very important that, that people have some grounding in why this is important and what matters. Scott talked, mentioned the parent survey. Our parent survey had 1,632 responses, which is really big for a voluntary survey. Parents overwhelmingly supported the district's current sex ed topics. The rate differed by grade level and topic. The lowest one was 53% for a 5th grade topic called Families and Roles. The highest was 90% for a 5th grade topic called Personal Hygiene, and you can all imagine why that was probably popular with families. 70% overall approval rating for 5th grade topics, 73% for 7th grade, 75% for 9th grade. So, overall, parents like that we're teaching this stuff. The other information we shared with the committee to give them a good grounding is what kids are up to, what's sexual activity. 35% of all Michigan youth, 9th, 12th grade, say that they have had sexual intercourse. If you break those numbers down, it starts at 18% in 9th grade, it grows to 54% by 12th grade. This is, does not include other sexual interactions. So, this is just a boy and a girl doing something that might make a baby. I bring that up because there are lots of other things that might put them at risk for sexual diseases, sexually transmitted infections, but those were not part of that 54%. 22% of students use drugs or alcohol before their first sexual intercourse. Of those sexually active in the last month, 45% did not use a condom during their last sexual encounter. Again, these are all kind of important numbers. National statistics, 49% of students in 9th to 12th grade are sexually active, that's a little higher than the Michigan rate. One in four new HIV cases are in someone under the age of 22. One in four sexually active adolescents will get an STI in a given year. So, if you go back to that, half of high school seniors are sexually active, and you look at one in four are going to get an STI, that's, that's a lot of risk to a lot of kids. And we were keeping that in mind as we talked about curriculum.
So, as we went through the data we talked about at the first couple of meetings, the third meeting, I believe it was, we started talking about what we're teaching and what the options moving forward may be. So, we brought forward three options for elementary, four options for middle school, and four options for high school. Those are the options that everybody on the committee vetted, went through, looked at. If they couldn't do it during the meeting, they could come in, set up a time with me, they came in the office, looked at it, and a few people did that to make sure that they properly went through all of those options. So, in elementary, they had Advocates for Youth, Health Smart, Puberty of the Wonder Years, which is a newer version of what we currently have. In middle school, again, Advocates for Youth, Health Smart, Michigan Model, which is a newer version of what we have, and then Comprehensive Health Skills for Middle School. And then, high school, just the older version, if you will, or the older student versions of what we had for middle school. So, they looked at those, and then we moved on. And we looked at the, what we're currently teaching the kids in 5th, 7th, and 9th. And ultimately, the committee overwhelmingly supported continuing teaching what we're teaching now. So, they appreciate the strong puberty focus in 5th grade. And then, moving into 7th grade and 9th grade, it's abstinence and a strong focus on that and healthy choices. And then, in 9th grade, when it finally gets to that, it starts out with abstinence and healthy choices, but then there's options for other, uh, uh... There it is, I'm like, yeah, sorry. Other options for birth control and things like that in the high school. So, the committee appreciated what's being taught now, they appreciated the way it's presented, and they appreciated that it's strongly focused in abstinence in the later grades and puberty and hygiene, like the 90% was in elementary. So, just to give you a background of what that actually looks like, in 5th grade right now, there's an HIV lesson, and the HIV lesson is actually mandated by the state. So, there's that. And then, there are eight lessons in the curriculum that we have, and actually, lessons A5 and A6, they only get one of those, so there's really only seven. Obviously, the males get the growing up male, the females get the growing up female. When they go into middle school, there are nine lessons. One of those, as you can see, there's not a number eight. The number eight gets thrown out, that's the condom lesson. We've never taught that. So, there's eight lessons that they have, it's the Michigan Model, it's a big blue binder, and then that's what we're teaching now. And then, for high school, it's the Safer Choices books, there's 10 lessons in that. And again, it starts out with healthy choices, abstinence, and then it gets down into using protection if it gets to that point.
So, the committee came up with some other recommendations that they would like to see as well. One was to make sure that we use multiple methods to make sure all parents receive the opt-out form. Some parents were concerned that maybe all the parents weren't getting that. It's not an issue I personally ever had, but, so email, school log, paper forms sent home with students, especially the, the elementary kids. Another suggestion was to survey teachers and students after the lessons to gather their input on the curriculum, kind of what they thought worked, what else they might like to see. That could be reported back. The SEAB is supposed to get reports every couple of years on what's going on with the sex ed curriculum, so that could be part of those reports. Another idea was to develop a summary of the lessons that could be distributed to parents, maybe at open houses or if parents reached out and asked. All parents have the right at any time to come in and look at the curriculum, but it's not something that can be easily sent home to parents. So, this would be kind of a one-page summary, and Scott didn't think it would be too hard to do. If parents wanted more information, kind of, here's what, you know, we'll teach. And again, it's not the entire lesson, but it'll kind of give them a little more details on what topics are going to be handled. As Stephanie mentioned earlier, there was a discussion about maybe having the district develop its own curriculum that kind of meets what we want to teach, maybe a little modernized over what we have now. Some of the curriculum, we like the gist of it, but it would have things like options for preteens that refer to people with a penis or people, or people with a vagina instead of simply male or female and stuff like that, that we felt kind of was not where we wanted to go, especially at that age level. The final one was, the district should review the curriculum a little more frequently than every decade. So, we also have an official report, you guys may have already seen, it's included here, that kind of details a little bit more about the meetings and how we picked people and, and the discussions. And that's all we have, we realize it's very late. I'm betting you guys have questions.
Trustee Burt? Sorry, so you're in first, go for it.
It's fine, thank you. The stats you put out there, Students at Risk, you put the Michigan youth and the national stats, did you, would you have access to like local stats, maybe, not, not just Dearborn, maybe like Southeastern Michigan, Wayne County?
They don't break it down more locally. We did have a very long discussion about maybe even if we could get just Wayne County. And the nature of the survey, it's not broad enough that you can take it down to that small a level and get accurate statistics. Because they, what they do is they pick certain high schools every year, and they have a whole method for which high schools they pick. So, you might get down to there's only like a couple of high schools in Wayne County, I don't know the exact numbers.
Sure.
But it, but we couldn't get it closer to just Dearborn.
Sure, sure. I've got a couple more questions. You said we could survey after the class, what else they would like to see, the teachers and the students? I mean, is that information that's going to change the work of the, the committee?
Well, it could inform the next committee. You know, we had a very, we had four students on our committee, one of them came to, I think, every meeting, almost every meeting, he offered some great insights. And one of the things he said repeatedly is, "Kids are talking about this a lot more than you're giving them credit for." So, a survey like that might just say, you know, we had some committee members that felt very strongly that sex should not be taught in 5th grade. But, and he was arguing, the student was arguing, "They're already talking about it, and you're kind of doing a disservice by not." So, the thought with the survey, and I don't know exactly how we do it, is it might give us a better feel for what kids want to know. Maybe things they're asking in class, or maybe things they're not comfortable asking in class, but are we really giving them the information they want and they need?
So, I do agree with what you said, this should be reviewed more often than 10, 11 years. So, what I'm hearing you say, with the surveys come back with, this is information that would be put on hold until the next committee meets?
Right. The district on its own isn't supposed to change the curriculum without going back to the advisory board.
Thank you very much. That's the one to get, uh, the books, or maybe state mandates. If there's any changes before the next committee meets, are we obligated to?
Changes in what?
Let's say the state decides to do something crazy, like, there's a lot of crazy stuff happening in Lansing now.
So, the HIV lesson is the only thing mandated by the state at each level.
Okay.
So, the districts can choose to or not to teach the Human Growth and Development.
Okay.
So, the state basically provides the districts that option. And if we choose that we want to do that, that then enacts the SEAB, and we have to go through this process.
Great.
So, there hasn't really been any change in that all along. It's basically, you must teach the HIV lesson, and then if you choose to teach the Human Growth and Development, which the vast majority of districts do, then this is the process you have to follow. There hasn't been a lot of change in that process throughout recent history at all.
Okay, and the first part of the question was like books, like if a publisher decides to change, whatever.
So, there are, sorry, there are updated versions of those, and those were some of the ones that we actually showed them. And the updated versions weren't preferred by the committee. The committee prefers to stay with what we have for whatever reason. So, yes, there are, but we don't have to go to those new versions if we approve the old version. Like, we can, we can ask, but then that has to come from the committee before it would come to you. It can't just be, hey, can we do this? It's got to come from the committee to come to you.
We're not really using books right now, mostly it's copies and handouts of what we already have.
Okay.
So, we're not, you know, it's not like we can't order more books, we have the handouts, and we just keep making copies.
Yeah.
Okay. So, from what I'm understanding, any changes, anything to curriculum, you have to call for the committee to meet again and approve?
Right. It would have to come to the committee, the committee would have to go through whatever change they were looking for, and then present that back to the board.
Thank you very much.
Any additional questions? Is that, does that cover yours?
I'm all set.
All right.
Thank you.
Trustee Watts?
So, going back to that in terms of if we were to use an updated version, would we then have to create a whole new committee, or how long does a standing committee, how long, how valid, or how, do they have an expiration?
So, the committee, in theory, just meets every couple of years, goes through the data, and then looks at what they have, and then where they want to go. And if they say in two years, this is what we want to do, then on we go. If they say at that point, you know what, we really want to change to fill in the blank, whatever curriculum, then we, that's something that would come through the committee back to you again. So, the change would be initiated by them.
So, does the committee then stay intact? I guess that's what I'm asking.
If people choose to stay on it, yes.
And then, if they choose to step down, would we have to open it back up to the public?
In theory.
And start the whole process?
In theory, yes. I mean, it, we, I guess it depends on the number of people, and as long as we're adhering to the clergy, public health, teachers, administrators, students, parents, like there's set numbers for those.
Right.
So, as long as we have those, then you could continue. If at some point you get below those numbers, then you would have to start pulling new people in to stay in it, in accordance with that.
Okay. And I think the other, I mean, the other two things I had were just more comments. I think part of this, since the last time it was updated, was 2012.
Yes.
I feel like that's maybe something that we could do maybe every five to seven years. I think it seems like 11 years is quite a long time to have to wait to kind of redo this.
It is.
And then, the other thing is, I know that having, we see that we had a lot of people volunteer, but then the commitment seemed to be an issue. And perhaps something to think about next time, knowing that we have to have a certain amount of parents, clergy, and whatnot, next time, perhaps think about maybe doubling the number, knowing that maybe not all of them would be able to make it to all meetings, but something that we're not then finding a position where we're short individuals. So, if we over...
Yeah.
If we have two, if we have too many, then we know if there's a certain percentage that's going to drop off, factor that in.
Yeah, well, initially, we did. I think there were 10, it was eight or 10 people that said they were in, and then never showed.
Right.
So, we sort of did, but we could certainly bump it up more, yes.
Yeah.
Agreed.
Okay. Thank you.
And we did talk about, after our attendance fell off, maybe adding people back in, but we kind of felt like we'd had these meetings for a reason. There was information that we shared. The first meeting, you probably could have got from the PowerPoints and the discussion, but especially once we started getting to the statistics and some of those discussions, it felt like we didn't really want to bring people in halfway through because they'd already kind of missed the foundation.
Were these meetings online or were they in person?
They were in person. They were Wednesday nights.
Could you do a hybrid next time?
Maybe. I don't know if that, how much that would have really impacted it. I mean, it was kind of a sensitive topic, so it's kind of nice to be in a room with people to really discuss it and have some of those conversations. So, because some of them can be awkward. And again, we had four high school students, and I think all of them came at least once. You know, they're, they're busy high school students, so, so I, I don't know, that would be, especially with this kind of topic, that might be a little trickier.
Yeah, and when we reviewed the information, it was all hard copy. So, you physically had to be here to go through it.
Okay.
Trustee Mose.
I, I just had a question on the overall opt-out process. So, how is it being done right now? Is it per request by the parent to opt out of the process?
So, right now, somewhere in the two to four weeks before the teacher teaches the unit, they'll send the opt-out home. It may be, if it's middle school or high school, it's in PE class, they can hand them something, some of them do it on Schoology. In elementary, generally, it's the classroom teacher, and they'll put it in like their homework folder or whatever, and it's just sent home. And then, it's up to the parent, if they want to sign it, fill it out, send it back.[1743.78] And then it's up to the parent, if they want to sign it, fill it out, send it back, they do, if they don't, they don't. So there's not any sort of online version or anything like that.
Any additional questions, Trustee Mosip? No. Getting back to something that Trustee Watts had said about frequency, the board does have the, the ability though to create a policy about how often we would meet, there would be no problem with that, correct?
Yeah, no, I don't, I don't think there would be a problem with the group of people we have now at all, it just was 11 years ago and just died. So no, I don't think there's an issue there at all.
And how long was this process? Did you say it started last fall?
The survey went out in August, right before school that we met, I think it was October, November, January, February, March, and then we're presenting here.
Is it normally about that long of a time commitment?
The initial, to, to get to this point, yes, and then once we move on from here, like every couple years, we reconvene and kind of look at everything, and then go from there, that's generally a meeting, maybe two. So to get it started, to get the, to get the recommendation to the board, takes much longer than the repeat visits after that.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Yeah, and one more thing, if I may, real quick, I, I will say, this committee, as I'm sure you're all aware, had strong opinions on all sides of the aisle, and I will say at the end, they all came to a common choice, like we all figured out a way to get to where we wanted to be, right? So I just wanted to say kudos to all those people, because nobody really won in this deal, right? Not, not everybody got what they wanted, but we all came to a middle ground and figured it out, and I just wanted to say thank you to everybody that was involved.
Glad we came to a compromise.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this point, we need...
I'd like to make a motion to extend the meeting for 15 minutes.
Thank you.
Support.
All right, we've got a motion by Trustee McDonald, support by Trustee Barry, to extend the meeting for 15 minutes. Trustee Watts, can I get a roll call?
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee Dambrosio?
Yes.
Trustee McDonald?
Yes.
Trustee Mosip?
Yes.
Trustee Petlicoff?
Yes.
Trustee Watts, yes.